Well, good morning again. Indeed. So, welcome to the Polk County School Board's work session. We will now call the work session for January 14th, 2025 to order. I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. Thanks to our staff who are available and accessible to us. And basically to address any problems that we would, you know, need to address or any concerns that we have. So definitely humbled to serve alongside you and the most highly educated and dedicated workforce in the United States. I would like to start by reading our "Who Are We?" statement. And it states this: "We are the Polk County Leadership Governance Team. If we were to pick one phrase to describe us, it would be student-centered. Because when we come together to work, we lean on our diverse backgrounds and our experiences to ensure that our decisions are focused on providing a high-quality education for all students." The four most important things to our governance team are: one, operating with integrity; two, respecting our students, our staff, our families, and each other; number three, establishing a culture where stakeholders feel valued, supported, and have opportunities for personal and professional growth; and then, number four, supporting an approach of continuous improvement to ensure student outcomes. And then collectively, we need to work on behalf of the children we serve, and we're going to find these avenues of agreement so that we can govern in an effective manner. And there is no acceptable alternative to that. We will always collaborate in a respectful manner in order to enhance the opportunities for each student and staff member. We will not disparage others. Our students will thrive because when we remain committed to that, to supporting the whole child, we hope to engage and empower our students and then stakeholders to create this community of lifelong learners. And at this time, board members, actually, I'd like to close our session out so we can address this first item on the agenda, which is our-
Mr. Chair, no, sir. We're going to amend today's calendar. I believe I provided that update to the board in my previous correspondence that due to my required travel to be present at the State Board of Education meeting, I'll need to leave this morning. Mr. Pitts will then sit in for the remainder of today's session, but I am altering my workshop agenda today, sir.
Okay, thanks Superintendent.
So closed session will be moved to a later point in today's meeting.
All right, and I'll just hand it off to you for you to take us through the rest of the meeting today.
Thank you, sir. So the first item that I'm going to bring before the board is an update on Pointe High School. And so we do have our counsel, external counsel, Brian Williams. We also have Mr. Pitts and others with us today. As the board knows, we originally received a P3 submission when we retained counsel using the funds provided by that organization. Mr. Williams came to our attention. He formerly was with Miami-Dade County Public Schools. He was the author of their P3 proposal policies and procedures. He is now an independent attorney who represents multiple school districts in P3 proposals and their review, the timeline development and other things. I won't continue to sing his praises. I'll allow him time to do that for himself. He is with us today. As the board recalls, we ended up with two submissions that moved forward. One party subsequently withdrew, and so there's only one proposal before the board. And before I make my recommendation, I'd like to go ahead and introduce Mr. Pitts and then subsequently Mr. Williams to, again, outline the process, the timeline, and the procedures that were followed. Mr. Pitts?
Good morning. And I'm basically going to just introduce Mr. Williams. Mr. Hyde did a great job of introducing Mr. Williams, and he's been guiding us through this process since it was a new process for us that we, you know, navigating through this, and he's done a great job. And Mr. Williams, will you come up? He's going to walk us through the process that we followed, and we'll go from there.
And good morning, everyone. Board members, chair, superintendent, it's a pleasure to be here today. Again, my name is Brian Williams, and I am with the law firm of Cole, Scott &amp; Cassane. As the superintendent mentioned, I have a lot of experience representing school districts in addition to Miami-Dade County Public Schools. I also served as the chief legal counsel to Lee County Schools and was also an associate general counsel to Collier County Schools. I also do represent multiple school districts in this capacity, and when I was at Miami-Dade, I was actually their construction and business operations attorney in addition to running their economic development department for three and a half years. But outside of that, again, I think the intent is to just kind of give an overview and an update on this process and to ensure the board and the community that the district did follow the statutory provisions. And again, that makes it relatively easy with respect to this process because it is very statute-driven. The language in the statute provides the process by which the district is to follow upon receipt of a unsolicited proposal, and I am here to assure you that that process was followed. And that begins with, as you know, the district received an unsolicited proposal from an external vendor, which is essentially a process that allows for a vendor to prospectively look at a district's needs in a particular area, and when identifying a particular project, in this case, this school, can propose a unsolicited proposal, meaning not something the board solicited, but something that they are bringing to your attention as a potential need. And then, once received, the district has the duty to, per the statute, review that proposal to ensure that it meets specific guidelines, and then there is the option of advertising and promoting that solicitation to allow other vendors to compete on it. That is exactly what happened here. The district decided to use the ITN process, which is an invitation to negotiate. That is a process that is actually being frequently used by districts because it gives a lot of latitude in terms of the negotiation aspect of a large project, which in this case, given the size of the school project itself, again, is probably the safest way to ensure that you're getting exactly what you want. And again, the difference in this process being that typically you have the district for a construction project put together a request for qualifications, a request for proposals, where you delineate the criteria that you're establishing for that project. Well, in this case, having a proposal being brought to you, it took that kind of control out of that aspect, which, again, when received and the district put out their ITN, that is the process where the district was allowed to establish a process to ensure not only that you are properly evaluating the qualifications of the vendor that has submitted the proposal, but ensuring a avenue for negotiating the best price as well, ensuring that the project itself meets the requirements and the standards of Polk County Schools. Obviously, the state has state requirements for educational facilities when constructing a school, but each district has its own unique standards for how they want their schools built, including the certain specifications that are built into those schools, and that could be security services or security IT services that are built into that school function. Well, once received, the district put out that ITN. I believe two proposals were submitted in response to that ITN, and again, those proposals are required to be evaluated on a certain basis of criteria. That process was built into your ITN, which is the evaluation process. It has gone through that evaluation process. It's now considered in the negotiations phase, which, again, is a criteria in your ITN, and I was looking at it before I got up here, and it allows for, at this point in the process, an opportunity for the district to negotiate with all vendors relative to their proposals and including requesting a best and final offer. And again, that's to get you to the best price for this particular project. As the superintendent mentioned, you've now had one vendor withdraw from that process, essentially leaving you with one proposal, one valid proposal active, and you're now at that phase of the process. But in terms of your process, the statute was followed, your ITN was followed, and your ITN traces the process that was followed in this solicitation process. So I think that's where we're at today, but if there are any specific questions about the process or the statute, I'm here and more than willing to answer those for the board.
Not seeing any questions. Board members, at this time, it is going to be my recommendation that we move forward with the proposal from Fortress. You each received a packet today. There have been questions by board members asking, you know, subsequently, who is working for Fortress? You've been provided a resume for each of those respective parties. You will find great comfort, I believe, in recognizing many of those names who have had projects successfully completed here in Polk County, Rota Construction being one and others. So again, based off the merits of the submission, based off the price, based off the fact that it met all of our metrics and our requirements, it is my pleasure to make a recommendation to move forward with the proposal submitted by Fortress. The board will not be voting on this today. Board members, please note that this will be included in the subsequent workshop as well to allow you additional time to have discussion or ask questions, but it will also be on that board meeting for that next meeting in January. So it's essentially, it's not coming back-to-back because I'm giving you over two weeks' time in which to submit questions to my office to get addressed and/or, and I would appreciate questions being submitted before the board meeting so we can make sure we do our due diligence, provide you with a timely response publicly if that's where you'd like your questions to be addressed. But again, and then moving from there, the board has two options. The board can either accept my recommendation of the proposal submission, or the board can reject that and direct us to go back and re-advertise to see and follow more of a traditional process versus the P3 process. So that, just want to make sure the board is aware, but it is based off the recommendation, the quality of their submission, their price point, and board members keep in mind that there were several things that were different. And I'm saying some of this because we have a new board member. I want to make sure that Mr. Keys and others have the full background. We did put very specific requirements and conditions on this project. That included being within a certain radius of the initial projected site. It also included that the developer would have to bring, or whoever is awarded the contract, would have to bring land to the table. This was an effort under the P3 for us to basically get out of the real estate business because, as Ms. Miller and I have discussed before, I think I've had this discussion with several of you, sometimes when parties become aware that the school district is looking for land, the price point changes. I won't say if it goes up, I won't say that it goes down, but sometimes the price point automatically changes because we are the ones in the market. We're not realtors, we're educators. And so this was an opportunity for us to push this issue of land attainment away. And so there were certain conditions that were made as far as the distance from a main roadway, main tie-ins, those types of things. Those were conditions that we put out in the ITN. There are two steps that are used to evaluate a proposal, just again, to give complete transparency. The first is an initial rubric scoring sheet. There's a committee of school district members who are representatives on that. Mr. Sharpless and others have asked questions about the questions and the scoring sheets. Unfortunately, because of the code of silence, we were precluded from sharing that. Happy to share that related to Fortress at this time because, as of today, Mr. Murphy, correct me if I'm wrong, the code of silence is effectively listed because I have now made an official recommendation before the board.
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll be able to address any additional questions or concerns that you have. So if there are additional documents that you'd like to see pertaining to Fortress and their submission, happy to share those with you. The others I can share as well, but I'll funnel that through our attorney and others just to make sure I'm staying above board in all of our actions. But again, you have one proposal before you at this time. It'll come back in January 28th, I believe, is our next workshop and board meeting, but please don't be surprised to see it on both the workshop and the board agenda. So it's not coming back-to-back, but it is giving you, affording you an opportunity to have time to review everything and ask additional questions that you may have. Please keep in mind, any questions you submit to my office, I will respond to the entire board, so they have the benefit of both the question and the response, but it will not have a particular board member's name saying, "Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so requested this." It'll simply say, "Board members, these are the questions that I have received." Ms. Wyatt?
Are we going to receive the proposal before the work, the agenda usually comes out, or is that something that we should just be-
No, we will forward the proposal to you today with the staff recommendation to my office.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharpless?
So instead of emailing it, I'll just put it in public record now. The two things that I would like to see, and I'm sure they're going to be on the proposal, is just location and then also how this is competitively priced. How we're getting, let's see, price and location is really important to me when building a school, so.
In the proposal, you will receive the final price for the project. I can speak to the fact that in this instance, it did come in significantly cheaper than what we built our most recent high school at. You know, there's speculation about Davenport High School, cost due to changes and other things, you know, it got close to about $200 million. This is well below that and includes the land. So when I first came in, Mr. Wilson and others had expressed a great deal of concern that the initial proposed budget for Davenport High School ended up changing significantly over time versus what the board initially approved, and then the final price due to change orders and other factors. So we took the opportunity to address a lot of that because at this point, it's a BAFO, the best and final offer, and we learned this from our first P3 proposal as well, that essentially, once they're locked in, unless we indicate a significant change that requires reengineering and structural changes to the plan, any additional costs, if they have to bring in additional labor to meet the deadline for the school to open, are not district responsibility. That is solely on the behalf of the developer and builders. So this is, in that regard, it's a process, and we will be bringing that process into our traditional design and build scheme as well. Because once we receive that, again, unless we direct a change because something doesn't look right, our group does a great job of reviewing the specifications and room dimensions and all programmatic needs as well. So in this case, this school, when we put out the ITN and we communicated with the parties that demonstrated an interest, we told them exactly what career tech ed and what programs would be at that site, so when they submitted the design, it should be as close to being the final design need specific for that program as possible so that there wouldn't have to be this back and forth. Because anybody could come in with a cheap design and then subsequently blame us for change orders? Absolutely not. We told them the number of rooms, we gave them a project model sample, all those things. So we eliminated all of that on the forefront. So I'm very pleased with that part of the process.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Allen?
I just want to make sure it's on record. I know I had submitted a couple of questions to you, and if you want to maybe address those, and, you know, I think it's important to bring that forward, so if you want to address those.
Sure. So Dr. Allen has submitted some questions to me specifically pertaining to Schenkel-Schultz, the architect, because you'll note that in the Fortress proposal, Schenkel-Schultz is the architect of record. The specific concern was, and again, Mr. Keys, I believe Mr. Sharpless and Mr. Nolte were both on the board at the time, before the P3 was submitted to us. We don't advertise for P3. Let me make sure everybody understands that. That is simply a proposal that can land in your lap at any given time. Mr. Williams and Mr. Pitts and others can attest to that. We had already began the process of reviewing the possibility of a new high school. We engaged and put out through our traditional process a request for a proposal or an ITN to architectural firms that we would be looking for a prototype high school. Many of you realize that several of our schools typically look alike because once we buy those plans, we can then replicate them over a period, a said period of time, and we reduce our overall costs as a result of that. So we asked for a prototype high school to be designed. We then contracted, selected, and contracted with Schenkel-Schultz. That contract would cost about $5 billion to the district. That happened at the forefront, at the beginning of all of this. P3 then came in and overlapped with this process. So Dr. Allen's question was, you know, is there a conflict of interest? In discussing it with staff, in discussing it with our counsel, it was determined that there is no conflict of interest, and here's why. First and foremost, the initial contract that was executed with Schenkel-Schultz for five-plus million dollars to design a prototype high school has never been executed. We've not been billed, no plans have been submitted, no work has been performed, and I think that was done potentially, essentially, may have been done intentionally by the architectural firm, knowing that they didn't want to have any semblance of a conflict. That was not directed by us. It's simply the reality that they did no work for us on that contract to this. Dr. Allen also requested, did any particular party during the submission process have an unfair advantage? Because if Schenkel-Schultz was the company that designed one of our previous high schools, in this case, Davenport High School, did they have a unique advantage having designed the high school, knowing that that's what we asked people to replicate? And the answer, based off my response, is no. Because all of the parties who were moving forward in this process had full and complete copies of rooms, room numbers, square footage, design specifications, and so everyone had a level playing field as far as their submission. So there was no surprises there, and that was part of why we had the BAFO process, was to make sure we compared square footage, we compared to make sure programmatically they met our needs. So all of that was included, and so those things were not conditions that would cause what's considered a conflict of interest in this case, very clearly. And then I can't recall the third question I addressed for you, Dr. Allen.
Yeah, I mean, that was the main one. I wanted to know, first of all, did we pay anything on that initial contract, right? Now, you know, the question is, you know, what happens to that contract that was already signed by the district? And, you know, does it, because it was communicated to me from our internal audit that it converts to a continuing contract. I don't know what that means, so I just wanted to know what happens with that initial signed contract that-
There are two options. That contract can either, we can either notify the architects of our intent to essentially not execute that contract. There are typically terms and conditions in the contract that stipulate the way both parties can walk away from the contract. I'd have to review that with counsel. Additionally, we still require a high school prototype moving forward. Otherwise, we're going to pay higher architectural fees each time we design a high school moving forward. And so what I'd prefer to do, the best way, I think, to address this question is to bring that to the next workshop and outline for the board what the options would be and what our recommendation's going to be, because I don't want to make a recommendation outside of staff. Again, we will still have a need to address high schools, and I can share, we have great high school campuses, but some of our high school campuses now are getting a bit old and are either going to require significant refurbishment or arguably replacement. And so we want to be respectful of that. So a prototype high school, we do save costs, significant costs over time. So I'd like to make sure that staff are involved, so I can either commit to bringing it to this next workshop or the immediately, workshop immediately following that, but I'll notify the board in my weekly update as to where we stand with that. But I think those are your two options. We can either cancel that contract because of this certain situation, but again, we still require a prototype high school, and it's probably best to get your feedback on what the board would like to see us do to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for the presentation today, and just to clarify publicly, only because the optics of issues that Polk County's had in the past and the facts, if you use Google, has always been that facilities is where we've had issues, we've had legal issues, we've had people arrested for the practices here, which is a long time ago, and none of those people are still here, and we've made great improvements. But for the optics of the community that still think, and I'll correct the superintendent, I'm a broker realtor, there's none of us here that are, just kidding. When I did come onto the board and see what was happening with what we were paying, just from good information we were getting or not getting, the fact that we were only getting one appraisal at a time for land, there were some things that we could have saved money. This might not always be, it might go back to where we have to look at land separately, but we've got to find somewhere to pick up those dollars. My question to you, just for transparency, is you came here to explain this to us and you reviewed our process, which I appreciate, looking at the processes that will encourage the community to have faith that what we are doing is the best for the district and spending the dollars and their tax dollars wisely. But I just would want you to confirm if you have any affiliation with anyone involved in bidding for our schools or construction projects and/or other facilities projects, just so people understand that we are trying, what we're trying to do is show transparency in this process.
Oh, no, absolutely, and no, I do not. And actually, as I mentioned earlier, I kind of am in the business of representing school districts at this point and coming in and using kind of my knowledge in these particular areas to assist districts, and that's exactly what I'm doing. But as far as the vendors are concerned, I have no affiliation with the vendors that bid on these projects. That would be a conflict for me, so.
And the ITN process, is that something that other districts use?
Yes, and so the ITN process, and I think one of the places that got picked up, there's another district that is also going through a P3 process as we speak, and I know that staff, when looking out, and I do it as well, we're always monitoring what other agencies are doing across the state relative to this process. What I believe that another district is the ITN process, that's something that I think that district in particular utilizes on a more frequent basis. But as I mentioned, there has been a shift in a lot of these to that ITN process, again, because of the ability to negotiate throughout the process. Usually with the request for proposal or request for qualifications, it's very delineated on the scoring process. Here, you have built in, and if you look at the details of your ITN, it allows you negotiation at the second phase of the evaluation process where you have the opportunity to go back and forth with the vendor to really hone in and specify what the needs of the district are, what the requirements of the district are relative to the project. And I think that process, again, allows more flexibility, albeit a new process for this particular district, it does allow a little bit more flexibility in negotiating this type of project, and it is- And it is a, a process that a lot of districts are kind of shifting over to as we speak. You have your more traditional ITV, RFP, RFQ, but ITN is, is showing up. And I can say in Lee County, which is where I live, that is a process that they're shifting to as well.
Thank you.
And I, I should also clarify, the ITN process was also used because you had an unsolicited proposal that you received. And so we then put out that, rather than just a raw RPA, you know, RPF, request for proposal, those types of things, which we would do if we had no parties already having had a submission. So the ITN was done because we already had a submission and we wanted a true apples-to-apples comparison, so we fully delineated the qualifications and criterion in that regard. Mr. Keys?
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to Superintendent Hyde for giving us some information on the process of the P3 and, and also for Chairman Dr. Allen for his questions and Mrs. Miller for her comments, because coming into this new, it, it does shed some light on the, the situation going in. And I will, I will say that it gives me a level of comfort having, actually, I think, and I'm not going to speak for all of the board members, but I've actually been through that process of the Rubik and the scoring as a community member, and then sitting on the board as a certified general contractor, some of the transparency we'll see in, in reviewing those plans and projects, I think is, just speaks to the public and showing that we're doing our due diligence. So I appreciate everyone involved, and Mr. Williams for coming to show us that. And I'm excited about this because this project is long overdue. Those of you familiar with the growth in that area of the county, I think we're probably a year behind schedule on this. So I appreciate everyone's input in it.
Dr. Allen?
Thank you, Superintendent. And, you know, Mr. Williams, thanks again for being here with us as well. I appreciate your time earlier. You know, and I think I'll just reiterate a couple of questions I had for you at that time was, you know, we did get the letter, right? From the withdrawal from the other organization. So I just want to make sure, you said there were no critical concerns that you had, right?
That's correct. And, and actually, just from a logistics standpoint, once a firm withdraws from the process, there's, you know, if you look at ability to contest things, they lack standing to, to raise issues down the line. So now that vendor has voluntarily removed themselves, so now you're essentially left with the, the remaining vendor. But I think as Superintendent Hyde pointed out, you have the ability to look at the scoring and the best and final offer that were submitted prior to the withdrawal. So you have all the criteria, as Board Member Keys mentioned, to be able to transparently evaluate the qualifications that ma, met the criteria that was established by the district, also consistent with the statute.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate that.
Superintendent? Yes, sir. Ms. Fields?
So the process was very tedious and long. And I think that it would have been good if Mr. Williams could have come up front. And maybe that wasn't possible because of all the litigations and stuff, I'm not really sure. But I appreciate you being here today. And in reference to what Ms. Miller said, we did have a serious situation back in the early 2000s, early 2000s, a long, long, long time ago. And our facilities department have really done a great job trying to make sure that we do things upright. And it's, as a board, we are supposed to be objective until the very end, and then look at the information, whatever is best for the district, and then move from there. And I think that's where we're headed now. And sometimes it can be a little bit cloudy because of pressures that we sometimes get outside of, of the boardroom. But at the end of the day, we have to look at the information and be objective and do what is best, again, for our students and for our, our school district.
And, and to that point, Madam Board Member, I think as far as the tedious nature of this process, I will say it was tedious and, but it was followed in accordance with what the staff put together in terms of the process. Oftentimes with this type of project, and I, and I work on several of these, there are things that occur in the process that make it a more tedious process. And a lot of times that requires staff to do some extra due diligence in reviewing the information that has been provided and following up on that. And, and so to that extent, I, I can assure you that staff understood the, the importance and significance of this project and did just that. And, and that sometimes causes delay, albeit not intentional, but to really make sure that the process is being followed accurately and that the information that is being provided is accurate as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and I'd like to go ahead before we wrap up, because I don't see any further questions. I, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Pitts and the team, because much to Mrs. Fields' point, you know, there are times where the timelines and the decisions can seem frustrating, and, and there were times where I'm saying, why can't we just do this? And it sounds great, but it, I have to rely on staff not to be a bunch of bobbleheads saying, yeah, Mr. Superintendent, we'll make it happen because, simply because you want it to happen. To Ms. Fields' point and Ms. Miller's earlier point, things have changed. And, and I give a lot of credit to the team for being willing to stand their ground and say, no, this is the process we have to follow and here's the why. But I would like to recognize and again, thank Mr. Williams publicly, because what, what you don't know are the number of hours he forfeited on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays to take teams' calls with myself, Mr. Pitts and others, to work through all the questions. Because the P3 process is very new. We're one of a handful of districts that have actually gone through this process, and so there's a lot to learn. Our process will continue to improve, we'll have lessons learned. As you know, board members, we've had a request to meet, to discuss the process with other parties. Happy to do so now that Dakota silence has been lifted. And so if we can learn from that, fantastic. But I, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Williams. He's been a great partner in this. And I teased him, I said, I did tell him we had a vacancy if he was interested. But he's, he's done a great job for us and I, and I look forward that if we have any subsequent P3 proposals, or even if we go the route of furthering our ITNs, I, I think he's a great partner with us to continue to keep in, 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 in a relationship with Polk County Public Schools. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pitts. And thank you to the entire facilities and maintenance staff for all that they did throughout this process as well.
Thank you. And thank you, Board Member of, of the board.
There are no further questions. Thank you. Board members, I'm going to try and get two topics in before I have to trans, to leave. The next topic I'm going to bring before you is the Crystal Lake Elementary School Turnaround Option Plan. You've already seen this, but I felt it's important to give you an update, simply because I will be traveling to represent the board. It's unfortunate, you have to travel to Destin for a three-minute discussion with the State Board, but I, I'm pleased with where we're at. We have submitted our presentation to, to the Floor Department of Education prior to, to the meeting, because they have to prepare, they also want to verify data. So throughout our presentation, they double check our numbers, they double check for PM1, PM2, those kinds of things. So what we are submitting to the State Board is, you will recall that your initial approval was that if Crystal Lake Elementary School did not exit DA status this year, did not see their grade improve to a C or better, that the school would be closed for a period of one year and then reconstituted and reopened as a STEM magnet school. Since that time, we have learned that that school, essentially, we are appealing to the State Board of Education. That is still the plan, should, should my presentation get denied by the State Board. However, I am requesting of the State Board for a minimum of a one-year extension based off that school's positive trajectory and the district's history of exiting DA schools. We have an impeccable track record of doing so. We, we made great strides at that school. I'm pleased, I've been sharing with you the progress monitoring data. It does wrap up. Unfortunately, you'll have it in time for the next board meeting. Actually, at the next workshop, you will receive the comprehensive summary, since now graduation data has been released, will now be able to provide you with a comprehensive summary of all of our goals and as to whether or not we've attained all those goals for growth in, in specific areas. So I'm excited to be bringing that to you, but I just wanted to, to go ahead and summarize for you that I will be asking the State Board of Education for a one-year extension for Crystal Lake, based off their positive trajectory, based off, you know, the scores that we're seeing there, the fact that it's a community wraparound school and other factors, and I think all of those work in our favor. And I've, I've gotten great responses from department staff as to our proposal. So I, I assure you that I will text and/or call you immediately after my presentation tomorrow if the State Board takes action, either way, so that you're looped in. So just wanted to go ahead and cover that and see if there are any questions or comments about that before I move on to the next item. Seeing none. The next item, I'd like to bring Avail up to the podium. Board members, there, there's been a lot of work and a lot of conversation about employee healthcare. And as a school district, we have really two goals. Number one, how do we provide the best possible care options for our employees and their families? And number two, how, equally important, how do we do so in a manner that's affordable? Mr. Keys is new to the board, but Mr. Nolte and Mr. Sharpless and, and our respective other board members have known for some time that our costs for our healthcare and our insurance plans have continued to grow. And because we pay the full cost of that, unfortunately, it takes money off the table to offer in other areas such as raises and compensation. Over the years, we've spent, since I've been here, we've spent close to $21 million to offset the costs of our insurance. I want to give great, I want to recognize Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller for their work on their subsequent committees. We've seen a lot of progress to date. Recently, you recall that we published an ITN, an intent to negotiate, looking for a consultant for us, because our current consultant is retiring, had notified us 90 days of their pending retirement. At the time, when we posted that ITN, there was a, there was a, a segment in there that actually excluded independent consultants from being able to apply. The phrase essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, and if I get this incorrect, I apologize and I'll send out the appropriate phrasing later. It essentially said that for you to apply, you had to have an, an established agreement with the insurance companies. And I'm seeing your faces, which is the same face I made. How do you have an independent contractor who subsequently has some type of relationship with the insurance providers? That's not the dog I want in the fight. That's not the dog you want in the fight. You want one that's off the leash, ready to go, is going to fight for us and do the right thing. And then by no means am I, somebody's going to claim that I'm encouraging dogfighting, and that's not what I'm encouraging at all. Probably not the best analogy I could have used, so I apologize to ASPCA. I do adopt animals. So that being said...
I'm really worried about that.
I am, actually. That being said, I think you see the point, right? We want somebody who's going to truly defend us. And so we had an opportunity, the ITN was published, we received three respondents, two, we, we ended up with one that qualified, so I am not going to bring you a sole recommendation. So prior to that ITN and us pursuing other options, there are companies like Avail that I wanted to bring before you so you could hear from them, hear about their consultancy, hear what they can do for the district. And then I'll have further conversation with you in an open board meeting like this to get your feedback before we go out and pursue options moving forward. Just for full transparency, at the next board meeting, there will be another company that's coming forward as well, just so you can see some comparative options as well. This does not mean that I'm supporting Avail. I mean, they're here to, to share what they can do. I would not have them here if I didn't feel that they basically could satisfy some of our needs. And so I'll shut up now and go ahead and turn it over to these gentlemen and welcome them here today. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, Board, for taking your time to hear from us. I'm Joe Albritton. I'm the CEO of Avail Benefits. And this is Darren Bryan, Chief Operating Officer. A little bit about our history before we get into this. In 2016, out of requests from our clients, they wanted an independent, truly independent party representing and sitting on their side of the table. We're going to explain exactly what that means in here. We started the process of building out a very unique skill set that has since been identified by multiple parties as a sole source solution for what we do. But to, to summarize, we're going to be able to tell you what, who we are and what we do in three slides. And then we're going to open up questions, because people always want to know, because this is, you've never heard anything quite like this, I'm betting. So we're going to open up to any questions, but if you'll please hold your questions until we get through our three short slides. I would appreciate that. Oh, by the way, Ms. Liel was, was not able to make it. She's our senior consultant. She's a tremendous asset to our, our company, and she's not able to make it, she wasn't able to make it today. So first slide, independent strategic analytical consultant. The most important piece of information on this slide is the bottom portion of the slide. In the state of Florida, to become an insurance agent, you must satisfy two criteria. The first is you must pass the state test to get your, a lot of people have heard 215, all that kind of stuff. So you have to sit through the class, take the test, and you pass the state exam to hold the insurance license. But that license is not activated until such time that you are appointed to a carrier. When you become appointed to a carrier, you're asking the carrier to, can I please represent you to the public? The carrier then appoints the agent, and that license becomes activated at that point in time. Florida statute sets out that the responsibility of an agent is to solicit, negotiate and effectuate contracts. If you are appointed to a carrier, you can only solicit contracts provided by that carrier to the public, to you guys. That being said, if I was to be an appointed agent and I did something that made the carrier less than happy, there would be a potential problem that I could lose my appointment with that carrier. I still hold a license from the state of Florida, but the license is not activated. The process that we went through is called an unaffiliated licensed agent. We set out at the state of Florida and we talked with many lawyers and Department of Insurance and all that kind of good stuff, to go through the methodology and the process to hold a license without being appointed to any carriers. So we are unaffiliated. That means we are unable to place insurance for you. That's the catch. But we are able to explain everything that's going on to you and truly sit on your side of the table, because we don't have to answer to any carriers. We don't have to answer to any holding brokers or aggregators. A lot of insurance agents that you think about are owned by larger broker houses. They're subsidiaries of larger broker houses. So it's possible that a larger broker house may hold a license appointed to a given carrier. We cut all ties from all of that. We are self-appointed. We only answer to us and the state of Florida and whoever our clients are. That is the simple explanation of why we, you know, we could not respond to the ITN because your ITN requested that some, you be appointed to the carriers. Well, if, if you're wanting someone appointed to the carriers, they're going to have an affiliation with the carrier. So we, we were unable to respond. We can't respond to any broker ITNs because of that. But that's also our strength, that we don't have an affiliation. We know all of them. We have 25 years of experience in the broker world, so we know all these people. Like I said in the beginning, in 2016, the request was made for us to cut ties and become truly independent. So we did, and our business has flourished ever since. That being said, that's what removes the inherent conflict of interest that all of you probably walk around in the back of your mind, no one was there. You couldn't quite put your finger on exactly how or what it meant or what to do about it, but you knew it was there. So that removes that scenario. The next, the next slide I want to talk about is, how did we develop a unique set of skills? So we have staff that are specialists in risk management and insurance. They're licensed unaffiliated agents. We have ARMs and CICs, and those are all insurance jargon for people who've taken a lot of other tests to prove that they know what they're talking about. We have financial modelers and mathematicians on staff. We have experts in negotiations, graduate-level experts in negotiations. We have graduate-level experts in strategy. We have certified wellness personnel. We have certified self-insured personnel. We have people who have high-level training in data-driven decision modeling, operational optimization, behavioral economics, change management, and general business excellence and practices. The behavioral economics scenario is somewhat unique. When you think about a wellness program and you think about your incentives and surcharges, typically those are arrived at in a non-sophisticated or non-scientific method. Somebody overhears doing that, so that makes sense. The, the practical application of that should be driven by behavioral economics. You should be doing those things in a way to drive the positive outcome to the district and to the employee. So we developed, that's, I'm just pulling that one out as an example, as to why we develop that skill. But those are the, those are the unique skill sets that we present. In addition to that, we have former regulators, former DOE personnel, former Office of Insurance Regulation personnel. We have attorneys that specialize in, in insurance law and procurement law. And we have procurement experts that have done many, many, many procurements for government entities. That's the unique skill set that we developed in response to what our clients were asking for in 2016. If you take what we do and, and sort of... If you take what we do and sort of build it into three buckets of expertise, you have compliance and best practices analysis. Some of our clients use us in an attempt to make sure they are in fact compliant with the Auditor General. Superintendent Hyde, I'm sure is familiar with the Auditor General. They probably visit him on a regular basis. A lot of the school districts that we work for.
For coffee, not because there's a problem.
No, 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 no bad reasons, but some of the school districts throughout the state of Florida have not had such a joyful experience with the Auditor General, and they get findings. So, what happens is a lot of our clients will hire us to come in and look at their internal procedures and processes and help them evaluate what changes they need to make to become compliant. So, that's an example of the compliance and best practice. The best practice scenario, we do have tremendous experience and expertise in understanding the health insurance industry as a whole. We know the games that are played. We know how, we know the, you know, the coin under the coconut game that people like to play. We know all of those things, so it's easy for us to decipher those things. Procurement negotiations, a lot of our clients do utilize us for subject matter expertise on procurements. It varies from client to client to what degree or what the purpose of the procurement is. We've gone out and supported other school districts in finding agent records. We've gone and helped other school districts find, run processes to find ASOs and PBMs and a variety of different things. Once again, being unaffiliated, we're able to sit on your, truly sit on your side of the table and analyze what's coming in. And then the last thing is data development. What, what we've determined is every school district is unique, every single one, especially when it comes to your health insurance dynamic. If you think about it just in terms of network access, Baker County Schools does not have access to Lakeland Regional Hospital. So, when you're, when you're thinking of it in terms of just network structure and what carriers aligned with who, all of those scenarios go into what makes up the unique fingerprint of a given school district. So, we build proprietary data mines for each and every client. We look at what your employment contracts look like, what your negotiating and your bargaining looks like on requirements. We look at your board policies. We look at Auditor General findings, geographic constraints, demographic constraints, fiscal constraints, legal constraints. If you can think of something, we put it in this data mine. And then what we're able to do is look at each and every one of your strategies and policies and run it, run it through our data mine and determine if it's compliant or not. That in a nutshell is, if you think about the practical application of what we do, that's what that slide is intended to demonstrate to you. This last, we call this the wheel. We had to develop a comprehensive understanding of what makes your health insurance actually work. Giant Jigsaw puzzle. Typically, what you'll have is somebody will go out and they'll bid the ASO, or they'll look for an agent, or they'll talk about a wellness campaign, or whatever the case may be. It all has to fit together and touch every one of these components, all nine of these components, to work properly. Every one of our clients, we utilize this optimization model as the backbone of how we look at what they do. And to just give you a really quick explanation, if you look at four, five, and six on this, we refer to that as the change management category. That's how you're changing behavior of your employees. That's how you're changing for the, for the better, for them to be healthier and to cost you less money. Wellness is when the employee takes action outside of the given healthcare system. They're going for a job. It's not related to your healthcare process. Health literacy, simple concept education. They need to understand the difference between a deductible and a copay, something along those lines. They need to understand how the wellness program ties in. And then the member engagement piece is, when that employee does need help, how do they take all the health literacy they've had and apply it to the actual engagement or when they interact with the healthcare system itself? So, all of those pieces fit together, and we take this comprehensive view and look in every little crack of what's going on in your healthcare system to determine what we can do to make corrections, right the ship, save you money, get better insurance for the employees. That in a attempted very short timeframe, it typically takes us several hours to go through all this with people. But I, you know, the best-case scenario, hopefully I've given you enough to at least promote some questions. So, that is the short and simple of who we are and what we do. So, now I would open up for any questions anybody has.
Ms. Miller.
Ms. Albritton, thank you for coming today and presenting. I know you think I'm a jack-of-many trade. So, I was raised in the insurance companies. I won't tell you which one in Winter Haven, but if you're from Winter Haven, you know which one. Family or agents, I worked for an agent, you know, I worked for insurance. I quickly left the insurance field because of how difficult it can be, just on how it works, the process. I can tell you, I stood on the insurance committee, one of the committees here. I asked for the ITN, and when it went out, I, I still haven't received it, but the process is good. I know that, I understand from your explanation today why you weren't able to apply to that, and I appreciate the, the avenue that you're coming from, only because as an outsider, former employee, as someone who is an elected official who sits on insurance committees, the room was talking, and they were talking the business of insurance. Nothing against any of my staff, but the business of insurance is exactly what you, what you said. It's people that are interconnected, selling us their products, giving me data from their products, not an overview from best, what we would call in education is best practices. And it's kind of how insurance works. It's how, it's why you have that multi-layer. You know, if I have a wellness program that's owned by the insurance carrier, and I'm getting so many dollars back in on the usage, the data reflects that, but it doesn't reflect entirety of what would be available to this. And being a self-insured organization as large as we are, which, largest employer in this county today, Publix may beat us tomorrow, but we're right here. We suffer from limited knowledge, our limited knowledge of products that would be beneficial to an organization this size, even if we started talking outside of the state. And so, I believe our staff is doing the best they could, giving us the best products they were being presented, but it is all interconnected. And that's where, once again, like we talked about with facilities, you lose confidence from employees when I'm getting phone calls, well, in this county, we're doing this, and in this, over here in this organization, they're self-insured and they're providing this. And so, having an organization, so once again, for transparency, you are not connected to anyone currently selling us products or trying to sell us an insurance product.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
You're completely independent.
Okay, thank you. And I think that brings a level of transparency and also a level of competitiveness. Being in a market that is very competitive, being a, we should be the largest, not that I need extra special treatment, but bringing some, bringing this kind of business to the table to an insurance company, I feel like we need an outside source to show us where we can go to get the best return on our dollars. So, thank you for explaining that today. I didn't realize about the ITN being limited until you explained it, and I think it's good for the community and the employees to hear that it's interesting from an outside perspective, the selections that we are making based on the relationships that people have within the industry. And that, and it's nothing against, it's just how that industry runs. And so, I appreciate an outside view. Thank you for presenting today.
And to follow up on that, most insurance companies perceive brokers and agents as their distribution channels.
Right. And in the past, we've used that, yes.
Correct. And on the other side of the ledger, one, one problem we ran into with the idea of being an independent consultant like we are is their skill sets are extremely limited also. So, the second half of what I showed you were we built out those unique skill sets of the, the behavioral economics and the mathematics, all the different pieces of the puzzle outside of just a procurement expertise, because there are other agents, there are other agencies and companies out there that say, we will simply run a procurement for you. But the problem is, when that is done, they hand you the answer to that procurement and walk right out the door. So, the management and application of what they've just handed you becomes your headache. And we don't do that. We take the position of we stay with you all the way through the implementation and evaluation. At the end of the story, we show you an ROI on what you decided.
And we have not, and I, I don't think we've had that level. And I can tell you this, and my question is to you, on the other side of this, if you are connected, if there isn't a, if our middle, we call it the middle man or our liaison or our person, if they are connected to an outside entity, are they being given discounted rates? Are they being, is there any benefit from having that connection other than you're just selling me products that people, it's like, it's a medical supply. You're selling me the product of the person you represent, whether you represent them upfront or whether you represent them on the back end. Are they getting discounts for doing that? Why is that an advantage to them other than they just have that singular person they can sell products to?
Insurance companies contract with a pool of independent agents. So, if you think about, say, a Florida Blue, for example, there's 5,000 Florida Blue agents in the state of Florida. The incentive that a Florida Blue agent has is there's such a thing in the insurance industry as a book of business bonus. Now, in Chapter 600, which is the insurance regulations, that's perfectly legal. The bigger your book of business, the silver superstar platinum agent, and I'm sure you've had agents come in and say, more than likely, if you interviewed the top five broker houses in the state of Florida, they're all going to say the same story to you, and here's what it's going to sound like. We have second-to-none best relationships with all the carriers. We have such a large book of business, we can negotiate heavily with these people. If there's five of them, how does that work exactly? So, then you get into this scenario of, well, why would Agent A recommend Cigna and Agent B recommend Florida Blue if it really comes down to the actuarial study? There's something mathematically off kilter there. Well, not, I'm not implying that any agents do this. Please don't misread me. But I will tell you that if an agent has a way to develop a revenue stream that's satisfied through Chapter 600 and perfectly legal as building a larger book of business, and they can move $160 million of revenue, being Polk County Schools, into a carrier's book, can you imagine what the bonus on the back end looks like?
100%. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you.
Not, once again, I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of anything.
We're going to move on.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharpless.
I want to thank Avail for coming today and for this presentation. It's been eye-opening. I think the key is the unaffiliated licensed health insurance agent. And so, my question really is for the superintendent. You said you were going to potentially bring other companies. Will they, will these also be unaffiliated companies?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you for being here and presenting what you had, but I want to make sure that the future ones will also be unaffiliated because to me, that's the key.
Mr. Keys.
I'm going to echo some of that. I also want to thank Mr. Albritton for coming today and explaining to us, and I think the big part about it was the explanation of the affiliation and you guys being unaffiliated. This may come as a shock to some of the other board members, but I also, at one point, held a 215 license. So, I couldn't go out and make money until, you know, I was registered with a company and I was a multi-line agent. So, I left that industry like Ms. Miller as well, you know, for, for other reasons. But I want to thank you for your presentation and to the superintendent for making that a point to say we need to really have the benefit of having someone unaffiliated so we're, we're getting the best result.
And Ms. Fields.
I wanted to know the cost.
Oh, no, ma'am. We're not at that stage yet, but I can, I'd be happy to ask them to submit a prospectus, and we can go from there. But respectfully, I'd like to wait till we actually formally advertise.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't want the perception to be that we're giving an unfair advantage to any particular group or party.
Well, I would accept it very badly. It's coming, so.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Murphy, is a prospect, asking them to submit a subsequent prospectus allowable in the absence of an ITN or an RPF?
I mean, at this point, my understanding is that you have two options. You can do it directly.
Right. So, I don't know that, gentlemen, you're in a position to provide.
I guess my question might, might not be today, but I'm just saying typically, we know what the cost is going to be.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at some point in time, not today.
I think, gentlemen, you got your marching orders from Ms. Fields. If we could receive a prospectus, just kind of a draft summary of what your fee structure looks like and potential costs for the district to be finalized if there's a negotiation or how we, depending on how the board authorizes me to pursue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And then my other question is, what other school districts are you working with?
We work in an ongoing basis with Charlotte Schools, Hardy Schools, DeSoto Schools, Hendry Schools, Leon County Schools. We have worked on special projects with a variety of other school districts, and we work with some other municipalities, cities and counties as well.
Thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Nolte.
Thank you again for your presentation. After what I've heard, I'm certainly happy and glad that I picked the educational route to be a teacher. But you're doing a great job, and it sounds, it sounds very interesting and looking forward to listening to some more. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, gentlemen. There are further questions or comments at this time. Board members, I'm going to transition to Mr. Pitts. I want to say thank you for your flexibility. Thank you for your attentiveness. We covered a lot of very significant topics here at the front. Please be kind to Mr. Pitts for the remainder of the three items. Before you, we have a community group that's consistent with our process of bringing in partners to share how they contribute to Polk County Public Schools and our, and our staff and our students. And then there's one other item that's a grant before you, and then the last one is a closed-session item pertaining to safety, so we'll leave it at that. And then I believe there's some training for the board. So, thank you, and again, I will notify you as soon as I get a response from the State Board tomorrow. Thank you all very much.
Same, Travis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
I know there's no reason that you would not be kind to me. Correct?
Hold that.
Okay, we'll hold that. All right. All right, the next item on our agenda today is going to be Aerospace Center for Excellence. They're here to present their partnership with Polk County Schools. And we have Mr. Conrad, the president and CEO of this group, and Eric Crump, Vice President.
Well, good morning to the board. Good morning, Mr. Pitts. Good morning to staff. First of all, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be with you all this morning. Appreciate this time. I know you guys are all super busy doing other things, so I appreciate that. But, you know, again, my name is Gene Conrad. I'm the president and CEO for the Aerospace Center for Excellence and the Son of Fun Aerospace Expo, and we are here today to talk about our mission the other 51 weeks out of the year. Our mission is to engage, educate, and accelerate the next generation of aerospace professionals, and we do that with tremendous partnerships like we have here with the district, and we also do it through our six-day event, which is the Son of Fun Aerospace Expo, which is April 1st through 6th. So, thank you for that shameless plug. But why I do that is those six days generate 80% of our funding that go into our other 51 weeks out of the year. So, again, want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and right now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Crump, who's our Vice President for the Aerospace Center for Excellence, and he's going to walk you through the presentation this morning.
Thank you, Gene. Board members, good morning. It's a, as Gene says, it's a pleasure to be able to be here and speak with you guys. It's always great to see you guys out at Solo to Success, to honor the students that have soloed each year. So, I just saw a few of you a few months ago at that. But I want to go through, as Gene said, the other 51 weeks of the year. I want to start with this quote from Wilbur Wright, which is sort of our guiding principle on the education side of what we do. When asked about their first flight in 1903 and subsequently how to continue that momentum and how to train further pilots, because there were no pilot training programs, Wilbur historically said, "It's possible to fly without motors, but not without knowledge and skill." And that's what we do. We, we believe that there is certainly a methodology for kids to find their way into any career that they choose. We think that aviation is the great motivator. It's, it is a thing that makes kids look up. I still look up when I hear airplanes fly over my head. I can't help it. And whether our children end up finding a career in aviation or aerospace, that's really beside the point. What we're trying to do is to teach them to love learning, and we use airplanes as the carrot to encourage kids to participate, to learn, and to be motivated, to grow in their lives. We do that through, as Gene said, our mission to engage, educate, and accelerate. I've broken it down into just a couple of programs into each of these areas. We would need a whole work session for me to tell you the things that we do the other 51 weeks of the year, but I wanted you to be aware. If you're familiar with the flying, but you're not aware of beside maybe what goes on at Central Florida Aerospace Academy. I think our youngest kid so far was six days old, and I asked his mom why she brought him to Storytime at six days old, and she said, "My son Sal would never forgive me if we didn't come to Storytime, so I came for him." We have families that come every week, and we average 80 to 85 people there every week who come. It's early literacy, numbers, shapes, colors, but really just, it's airplanes. It's in the Florida Air Museum. Kids stick around and play on our playground. They learn more about aviation. This is a free event that's available to anybody in the community to come. Stem Sprouts is our pre-K enrichment program. We have an after-school program, which serves the students at Central Florida Aerospace Academy specifically. They're out of school at 1:30, which is very early for families, it's very early for kids. So we give them the opportunity to actually put into practice what they just learned in the classroom, so they can literally walk across the street and continue to get their hands dirty, or fly flight sims, or build things, or maintain our, and restore our fleet of aircraft. So we're excited for that. ACE's high achievement is, you guys remember Book It? Do they still do Book It? So I was not a big fan of reading as a child, but I read my books so I could get my personal pan pizza. This is Book It, but for airplanes. So as you continue to participate in school, maintain a clean discipline record, good attendance, we reward you with things like a trip to Kennedy Space Center, or a flight suit with your name on it, or a trip to iFly in Tampa to do indoor skydiving. So, it's an incentive-based program to encourage kids to stay in school and to continue to do good in school. And of course, we're out in the community all the time doing things like this, and working directly with kids. On the education side, I'm going to talk more about the Field Trip Program in a moment, so I'll skip that for now. But our summer camp program is very robust. We have about 300 kids every summer that come through our program, from future engineers to future airframe and power plant mechanics. We have a Take Flight Camp that focuses primarily on flight. And then our She Can Fly Camp, which is really designed to encourage young women to see that aviation is a career that is open to them as well. And for the last two years, that's the first camp that fills up every year. So that's working. We are getting that message out. We support our educational community and teachers and schools. Obviously, you guys are very familiar with our two Central Florida Aerospace Academy campuses, one on our campus in Lakeland, and then the second campus that began a few years ago at the Winter Haven Airport. We're very excited about the development of that program and the ability to clone programming, to clone the success of that program in Lakeland, and to bring that opportunity to the east side of the county. Very excited to continue conversations with you all and the superintendent about the ongoing nature of our relationship there. To those that maybe don't know, or are not aware, we funded the construction of Central Florida Aerospace Academy in Lakeland in 2012. The school board rents that facility from us, and the proceeds from that rent go into the Central Florida Aerospace Academy Foundation, which enables us to give out two private pilot scholarships every month, to allow students in Polk County to learn to fly at no charge to them. To date, we've had 184 pilots certified through that scholarship program, who otherwise would not have been able to afford flight training. So, thank you very much for your partnership in that way, and we look forward to continuing that in the future. We have two high school flying clubs, one in Lakeland, the Lakeland Aero Club, and a second club that began in Winter Haven, the Aspiring Aviators Aero Club that we participate in. And we are also the landlord for the Travis Technical College Adult Airframe and Power Plant Program, training adult airframe and power plant mechanics on our facility, which recently just added a night shift, so we've doubled our throughput of maintenance training on the field. We're very pleased about that as well. On the accelerate side, the flight scholarship is obvious. Most people know about that by now. Giving out those two scholarships every year, every month, we're able to get kids in the air. Many people may not realize, though, that that scholarship also funds our continuing education program. So every May, we hold an event called Celebration of Success on our campus. We bring in the senior class from Central Florida Aerospace Academy, and we fund up to $5,000 a year for deserving students to continue their education in trade school, pilot school, college or university programs, to continue the journey. And every year, we give out about $100,000 every May, continuing education scholarships through that program as well. I told you I'd come back to the Field Trip Program. When I first arrived at ACE almost three years ago, we, we had field trips from our schools that would come randomly, that knew that the programming was available, they would come. And the first year, we wanted to really standardize some lesson plans, look at some tough testing standards, some areas where students typically don't do well in math and science, and really focus our field trip programming around those things, to show kids that that would be a cool thing to learn when they go back to school. What we noticed in that program was that we had a lot of participation, but we were not reaching the Title I schools. Only about 20% of our field trip attendees were coming from Title I schools. We realized that funding was an issue. We went to our municipal partners in Lakeland, in Winter Haven, and in Bartow. I want to publicly thank the airport administrations and the city municipalities for their support of the Field Trip Program last year and this year. They came to the table with, with funding, so that we were able to make the Field Trip Program free to any fifth grader last year in Polk County, and this year, we expanded that to any fifth through eighth grader in Polk County. And so that you know, last year, we had about 21, just, just under 2,200 students that come, came through that program. Of those students, though, almost 90% were from Title I schools. So we were able, by reducing the funding hurdle, by reducing the issues for reserving buses, I know Superintendent Hyde is gone, but I wanted to thank him for his support in helping us streamline the process of requesting buses, guaranteed approval for field trips, and also Jeff Hancock, who was instrumental in helping us sort of understand how field trips work for the school board. We don't, we don't do that side of it. So it really is a testament to partnership. We wouldn't have been able to do it on our own. Obviously, the school board couldn't have done that on its own either. We were able to work together, though, and accomplish something really amazing. When you look at this year, though, we're currently scheduled, and this is a little bit old from the time I sent this to Jeanette, we're a little over 3,900 students this year that'll be able to participate in this program, and no cost to the student, no cost to the schools for attendance or for transportation. We're covering those costs through generous support. As Gene mentioned, it's almost time for Sun 'n Fun, so we do hope you'll all come. And everybody else who's watching, please do come, April 1st through the 6th. I mean, it is a really fun party, it's loud, and it's awesome, but it really is for a reason. When we, when we have this event, that those six days are for the other 51 weeks of the year. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Gene will as well.
We do have questions. Mr. Sharpless, I'm going to direct.
No real question, more comment. I just first want to say, thank you for your partnership with Polk County Public Schools. I was able to attend that Solo to Success celebration, and it was certainly a celebration. Those students were, when they were putting their brick down, some of them were stomping it in there, they were really excited about it. So I want to thank you for that, and all the partnership you have with us, you know. It's the first time I ever actually went, went across the street there and went to the museum. That was very impressive. I mean, you guys have a great facility there, and I would highly encourage people, the public, to go visit. It's really educational, and, and all the great programming you have, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Yeah, I just want to say, thanks for coming today and sharing. I think this helps get out the word of what you're doing and what you provide there. A couple of years ago, I went to Sun 'n Fun on a golf cart with the students, and I was excited to see what I was looking at, but to hear the students explain what I was looking at and the opportunities they were given, I can tell you that that, that's going to give back for generations, so I appreciate the efforts made there. I'd love to come to more events, so please make sure we're on that list, and to be able to celebrate the students. And I can tell you, girls, in, in flight is something that's very important. I've watched two very successful young women go through your program, but when I visit your schools, we're still lacking, we're still lacking that. And so I'm hoping we can encourage more girls to get involved in engineering, in flight, and all of it. So providing the opportunity, I think, is something that is amazing for Polk County, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields.
Thank you. Gene, I don't think I've had a chance to congratulate you on becoming the executive director. I think it's just awesome, the experience that you bring. You did an amazing job when you were at the airport, and you're bringing that now where you are, so thank God for you. It's amazing, all of the things that you all are doing, that we might not even be knowledgeable of. So we appreciate you all coming for your presentation today. And I think that one of the things that you all do well, and I know that we do well, is we really thank Mr. James Ray, because had it not been for him, we wouldn't have the Aviation Academy many, many years ago, along with Gail McKenzie, been the superintendent at that time. So there's a great history, and the partnership is great. And I believe there's a young man that used to be a student at the Aviation Academy that now works hand-in-hand with Ms. Crowley, I believe. And so that says a lot about what we've been able to do as far as partnering, and, and students being prepared for the workplace, and he's very impressive. So just thank you all for all that you're doing. We're happy to be a part of the partnership.
Thank you.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pitts.
You're welcome.
Great to have you all in the boardroom today. I was just thinking, looking at your artwork, you guys recently hired a Florida Southern student, graphic designer, so really appreciate you keeping local talent, and I love bantering with him when I see him, and he talks so highly of you all. So appreciate the work, keeping local talent. But when I look at your social, and I just see all those young kids in your, your spaces, and then I'm just like, so impressed with the accolades of the individuals that you put in front of the students. It's just like, pretty incredible. So, thanks for just, you know, raising up that next generation for us. So I appreciate the partnership and the information today.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Mr. Conrad, Mr. Crump, thank you for being here today.
Thank you all very much.
Yep. All right, board members, next, we have Gear Up Partnership Grant Proposal. We have Mr. Andy Baldwin, our senior director of federal programs and grants.
Good morning, board. The item before you today is information for you in preparation for a subsequent item on the January 28th meeting, where we'll actually ask for your formal approval to apply for this grant on February 3rd. The Gear Up Grant, we've been working on for some time. We anticipated that the grant application would actually be released this spring, but the U.S. Department of Education surprised us and actually released it late November, and then gave us a February 3rd due date. So we've been scrambling to get everything together, but we have a wide group of team members who've been putting this application together. The Gear Up Grant is a competitive federal grant. It is funded by the U.S. Department of Education, and it has a total of $35 million for the nation. We're not asking for the full $35 million, we're willing to share with some of the other school districts. This grant program is designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. This grant is kind of unique, in that it will follow a cohort of 7th grade students throughout their middle school and into their high school year, so it's a six-year grant. We have looked at the current 6th graders in a set of schools, and identified that cohort of 7th graders for next year, that we would like to follow through that and help them to see some post-secondary success. We have listed here the middle schools that we are going to target. It includes seven middle schools and an additional three combination schools. Then the way this grant works is, once the students have finished with their middle school, the grant follows the students to the schools that have the highest matriculation rate. So, the students going from Daniel Jenkins, we would go to the high school where more than half of the students are going, and support them at that subsequent high school. It's much easier at the combination high schools, where those students typically follow the feeder pattern and just matriculate directly into their high schools. The grant funding is set at $800 per student, and our current numbers show that our cohort for 7th grade of those students next year will be right around 1,910 students. So that would give us a total of $9,168,000 over the six-year period for this grant. I mentioned earlier that the deadline for this grant is February 3rd, so we will be bringing an item to you on January 28th to seek your approval, to submit this to the United States Department of Education. The project period for this grant is 9/1 of 25, so it is anticipated that we would start this grant program, if awarded, this next school year. And then the grant program would go through 2031. It does have a matching requirement of 50%. They call it 50%, but it's really a dollar-for-dollar match. So our total program costs would be over $18 million. But we are able to apply for a waiver to reduce our match requirement by 70%. So our total match requirement, if we're approved for that waiver, would only be about $2.7 million over the life of the grant, or around about $450,000 each year. We do not expect to have to use local dollars for that, but instead be able to use in-kind matches through our partner services and support, and some of the existing staff that are going to be providing support to this as in-kind contributions. So we don't anticipate having to come to the board for actual dollars, just using in-kind contributions for our match component. I've provided a link here. There's quite a bit of information out on the web about this grant, so I wanted to make it easy for you guys, if you guys wanted to look for more, for more information. And then I'm happy to answer any questions, either now or before the January 28th meeting, so that you guys can make a good decision.
Seeing no questions, thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
So before we move on, I want to introduce somebody. You might have saw her sitting with me earlier on the front row. It's Cindy Cangelo. She is our principal of Mulberry Middle, and she is shadowing, job shadowing me today. So I wanted to, to let her feel like what the hot seat, you know, down there. And that's not because of, of board members, it's just because of the way the air conditioning works right there. So I just want to introduce her. I was surprised anybody might want to do my job in the future, but she is the first person that's ever asked to job shadow me. So, thank you for being here today. The next item on the agenda would be budget and staffing. There is no new information to present. I do have information that was presented before Christmas break at the last board meeting, work session in December. I can answer questions. If you have any questions, I can pull that presentation up, or we can move on if there's no questions. I see no questions, and we will move on. The next items are informational items. We have Head Start Services Report, and we also have the superintendent's evaluation for 2324. Are there any comments or questions on those?
I have a question.
You do?
Yes.
Well, let's address Ms., I do see Ms. Fields, let me, there we go.
Thank you. This, this is to Dr. Allen. Are we going to get the remainder of the evaluations of the other staff, the compilations and all that?
Yes, ma'am. I have met with our internal auditor, and I will be scheduling an opportunity to meet with Ms. Yvette as well. So once I compile those and complete those, I'll send out that information.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
And Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you. I know in subsequent years, we've had a conversation about Superintendent Hyde's contract and his current salary level, as he has not had any salary increases since he came to us three years ago now. Is that something that we're looking at, at having? I know when we brought it up last time, he wasn't ready for that until we had data to back it up, so.
Yeah. I mean, I can speak to that. I've definitely asked to place that on the agenda in a subsequent meeting as well for us to discuss.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields.
I think that, this is just my opinion, before we do anything with the superintendent's salary, we need to make sure that we've taken care of our other employees as well. And I know that that's on the table, so I just want to make sure that it's aligned together. Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pitts, I enjoy you sitting here next to me. Chair Allen, I have a question, and this might be for later. This, this brings up another reason why I think we need to get together before September. So, and you might already have this scheduled for later, but I would like to discuss going back to dates, maybe March or sometime other than September, for us to be able to be in a room and have lots of conversation. I think today's process with that hearing brought up another reason why I would like to talk to my colleagues about some of our processes that we follow. So I don't know if you want to address that topic now or later, but I would, I would like to look at a retreat, either adding to what Mr. Superintendent Hyde needs, or our own. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we will move on, and that ends the superintendent's part of the agenda, and I will turn the next item over to you, Dr. Allen, which would be item F1, New Business for Attorney Search.
be item F1, New Business for Attorney Search.
Great. So we are now down to F1, and we are so happy to have our guest with us today. So if we can have our consultant, Mr. Doug Thomas.
Close session after.
Yeah. And you are recognized, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. And I think there's a PowerPoint. Is that going to be reloaded? Just to, we can work through it. But as that's working through the technology, I can kind of do some introductory comments as well. Oh, there you go. Okay. It's, it's.
Got our guy.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning as well. As a little bit of a background, as mentioned, my name is Doug Thomas. I'm Executive Vice President with Strategic Government Resources, which is the firm that you've all engaged to assist you in your recruitment of your general counsel. For some background information, for those who may be watching or in the audience, what we do at the front end of this process is to get an opportunity to meet with all of you, which I've done. I've held Zoom meetings with each of you to learn a little bit more about what you were looking for in the position and the challenges, the opportunities that you see that your next general counsel will be facing, and therefore the district will be facing. Above and beyond that, and working with your HR department, I had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent and a variety of other staff members, including some staff members within the general counsel's office, to make sure we fully understand how your operation works, the issues, the types of workflow, the types of inquiries that you receive. And all that led to the document that you had, hopefully had a chance to review at this stage, the Position Profile Brochure, that talks a little bit about how we will market this position. So it'll talk about the district and the, the challenges and the opportunities and the position and things of that nature. So beyond that, when I was first engaged, I had expressed some concerns about some compensation issues and some potential benefit issues. And so I was asked to take a look at that as well. So this morning, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through where we are at this stage, get any feedback that you have on the brochure, and also certainly present some information about what we think your salary range ought to be. So we'll capture all that information. Then I also have a proposed search timeline that we've tried to do in concert with your regular board meetings and working with Dr. Allen, recognizing when, when members and trying to schedule all of you gets to be a bit of a challenge. So with that, if you're ready, I'm prepared to, to work your way through it. So super. So for the benefit of the background piece of information, our process really does involve, first and foremost, getting to know your organization, getting to know you as the appointing authority. That involved a pretty extensive background information and discussions with each of you and your staff members, as mentioned. From there, after you tell us to hit go and launch this job, we'll be promoting the position through all the things that we do. We have folks that are involved in helping to promote the, through our social media marketing and all the other forums and networks that we use to try to attract quality candidates for this effort. And then as the process goes through, I described that we're at the front end, or we will be at the front end of kind of a funnel-shaped process. At the very top of that funnel, we're going to have candidates that come in that we're going to know basically what they've told us that, about themselves. And so as we whittle that down to the, to the applicants and then work with you to go through semifinalists and selecting semifinalists, they'll be responding with additional information that we'll start to unpack kind of their style and their background. So that will help you kind of narrow that, that group of semifinalists then down to a smaller group of finalists. At that point, we start investing even more work and energy and resource in terms of additional media searches and criminal history credit and reference checks and, you know, getting to know them at a much, much more granular level. And then I'll walk you through some other options as we go through what your onsite interview process starts to look like as well. But the goal here is to hopefully make this process as seamless as possible. I know that your previous general counsel had been with you for a long time, so you have not probably been through this process. Any of you, I suspect, they were, I think your incumbent was here before all of you were here probably at this stage of the game. So our goal is to help you walk through this process because it's something we do regularly and certainly work with boards and elected officials such as yourselves on a regular basis. So the brochure that hopefully you've had a chance to, to review by now, talks a little bit about the marketing of this position. So we certainly talk about the organization, about your size, your structure, and the programs that you offer. Certainly talk about the governance and how this position and how you are structured as an organization. Then we start to drill down into the department. We talk about the position and how it's structured. I have tried to identify, we'll talk about that here shortly, about some of the issues that I heard common themes. It's like a word cloud to me. The more often I heard these things, the more likely it's something that your folks are going to be dealing with. And so hopefully, we've been able to characterize those appropriately. And then in a similar vein, after talking to all of you and your staff, there are themes that come forward with the ideal candidate characteristics that hopefully reflect collectively what you, what you're looking for in this position. And then we talk a little bit about the education and the experience that you're looking for, compensation benefits, and how to apply and all the other resources with the links to the material. The goal here is this document that we will use to market the position really becomes the lens in which your prospective candidates will evaluate whether they think they're a good fit or not for this opportunity. So if we get this right, it helps our whole process go forward and making sure that we're, we're attracting the type of quality candidates with the right background and skill sets and hard and soft skills and things of that nature to go forward. So the items that we identified that I heard discussions take place with you and your staff really centered around four different things. Now, these are things above and beyond the general day-to-day operations that the general counsel is involved with. I know you're in the midst of some public-private conversations about school facilities, and there was a lot of discussion and angst and uncertainty of what that looked like. We don't know if your candidate's going to have that background or not, but we felt that it was important to say this is an issue that on day one, they're likely to be dealing with in some way, shape, or form. As you know, you have, I believe, 36 charter schools that you've authorized here. That's more than some and less than others, but it's a pretty extensive component. And those come up for reviews and analysis and renewals, as well as any potential new items. And all of you and your staff talked about the role of the general counsel being involved in helping you and crafting that process and making sure that process runs smoothly. A significant piece of what I learned about this position as I spoke with your representatives and yourselves is that a good portion of this job is involved in mediation and arbitration and facilitation. Certainly spoken with John Murphy and his colleague to, as they've stepped into this role, to get their perspective as well about what happens. And your staff has said a good portion of this person's time is involved in doing that type of work. So we just wanted to make sure that that was characterized in the material so that we have an understanding from your prospective candidates of, of what they would like, what a typical day might be involved with. And then the other piece, even though you're a very large district, I think, as I recall, you're the seventh largest district, school district in the state, public school system. You're a relatively small office. I've got some comparables that your staff and what we have done with SGR and comparable positions have put together. But you really have one attorney and two administrative support personnel. There's another attorney that works with the school superintendent that is kind of a tag-team approach, but that's a different position overall. And so that was something I thought was important to identify as well, that this is not one where you've got an army of four or five or six other attorneys that are representing you. Now, with that, there's a lot of work and work, working with outside counsel for all sorts of different specialized litigations and programs. So we thought it was important to say that although you don't have, the, the general counsel doesn't have a quadra of attorneys working directly for them, they have a quadra of external counsel working for them, and they have to manage that process. And that's a pretty, a pretty extensive slate of activities as well. So before I go into the next step, maybe I would stop there and just get any reaction if there were any, if, hopefully we've characterized what, what you all were looking for in this position, but this is your opportunity to let me know if we need to make any tweaks or adjustments in the brochure, and then we can talk a little bit about compensation and search timelines and things.
Sorry. No, Mr. Pitts, it was done very late. That's okay. Hi, thank you for joining us today and, and listening to all of our input. Under the day-to-day stuff, is that where you're going to include a lot of the, a lot of the focus on advising the board on current and upcoming legislation and/or policies that we have to discuss while in a meeting? I know that a lot of what we had to, we had to ask our former attorney, a very kind man who was here for a very long time, we had to ask him almost, it's almost associated as a meeting facilitator. But I don't, I don't know how to describe it. You and I had a great conversation about it. Would that be considered under the basic things, or would that be considered? Because you put charter school here, but there's also voucher. We have a lot of things happening here. I don't know that charter review is any more of an opportunity or a challenge, because we have a whole charter office that does that. So I'm not sure how we rank these. I mean, they're all important, very important things. I think the public-private partnerships is something that we are coming up on that's relatively new, that we would need somebody to understand the law and how those things work. When I saw charter schools, I was just a little bit surprised. Would that include all contract negotiations? So those are my two, because I know that West did a lot of our contract reviews.
Right.
And I mean, going even down to purchasing contracts and how we work through those departments. Is that something that will be included in this? And that's probably why we should get together and talk as a board? Or is this, or is that something that will, that is not going to be considered in this role and given to somebody else?
So a couple of things there. So I'll kind of take those as I, as in reaction. So the reason I put charter schools is virtually everyone talked about them.
Okay.
No one really mentioned vouchers. I understand that's another program. But so, as I said, in a word cloud concept, if seven of you all identified charter schools, it's likely I'm going to put that there because it's top of mind for you. So I put it there. We can, we can expand that section. I mean, this is the opportunity where if I have to make some tweaks in the document, we can do that. If you want me to add vouchers or any other programs, we could certainly add that to the charter school section and just kind of modify that a little bit. That's not much of a, of a tweak to, to, won't take, you know, very, very quickly for us to make that adjustment, if that's something you'd like me to do.
Well, and the board could have input on this. And maybe there's another title for that, because similarly, we just found out, and you might not want to call the voucher program, there, it's, there's other names for it, but alternative to what traditionally what we decide here, we've had conversation based on how that's funded. There's been some things that have happened in our practices currently that need, that may, we need to talk to counsel about, about, you know, how the law works with that and how we can go about facilitating that in a better way. So I don't, I don't know if, and it's, my colleagues can chime in, if they think charter schools needs to be its own, or if it needs to be like an alternative to our typical traditional funding, lawmaking, policymaking schools.
I will, I will comment for just a second because I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Thomas, and I know that charter schools are one of my major topics. And that, and that's what you focused on, correct, is, is what?
What I heard.
What we were telling you that we dealt on a day-to-day basis with, with our former attorney.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm going to move on. Ms. Fields has a question.
I was basically gonna, I'm gonna say what you just said, Mr. Pitts. I know from previous experience, Wes was very heavily involved with anything related to charter schools, going to the state level when appeals and everything happened as well. So I think whoever we get needs to be very well-rounded related to charter schools, the laws and statutes and all of that.
And as I said, if, if the board desires, I can broaden that section to charter schools and talk about vouchers. I can work with staff to get your appropriate wording to make sure it encompasses more than that and, you know, add a sentence or so if necessary, if, if that's desired.
I mean, I would defer to staff. I can tell you for one, just for an example, we've recently found that we have over 700 students who are getting a different line. They're going through the alternative funding through our voucher programs. They're also taking classes with us that we haven't been compensated for. And so that's a legal aspect of how we approach that and how we make sure we're being compensated. It's, it's such a relatively new subject that it doesn't, I'm not, I don't know that it needs to be, it's however, I think deferring to staff how they see that, but I know, Mr. Pitts, you've also been involved in that. I just want to make sure the person that's coming understands that the legal requirement for all this new legislation, including the choice, is, the choice options are no longer just charter, and it affects us legally and financially. Okay. Thank you.
I, I'll just, I, I think it's appropriate, given the, the fact that it's, you've got that many students and it's an issue. Let me, let me work with your staff. We'll get that adjusted, and we'll factor it into the equation. We'll take, I don't think we need a paragraph, but we can probably at least highlight it under that section, and we'll figure out the appropriate way to title it. Your other question, Ms. Miller, was also about the kind of the, the governance and the interaction with the board. I've tried to identify that, especially in the ideal candidate attributes, that that's kind of an ongoing process. I will tell you from my experience, both as a city manager, but also in working with city and county attorneys, and John would certainly, I'm sure, address this as well, that it's kind of, it comes with a territory, that that's an ongoing process, that when you're on the dais, you're likely to get called upon. I know there was a desire, many of you spoke about the desire for your attorney to be engaged in a regular and ongoing basis when you get stuck, or when the board seems to be, you know, challenged about what that looks like. So I've tried to characterize that, that that's the type of skill set that someone that's, that's willing to be, not overshadow you, but help you as you go through your governance processes. So hopefully, we've captured that. But if there's, I'll take one more look at that. If we need to tweak something, I'm glad to make, emphasize that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on kind of the, the generic part of it, and then we can talk a little bit about compensation?
I see no other questions. You can.
Great. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I had.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Fields.
I, um. About the vouchers and anything else, choice, all that. However, when you do that, make sure that we don't lose a charter school piece.
No, I, I will add to. I will not subtract.
Okay. But I think that we definitely need to honor her request.
Surely. My, my, my thoughts are, I may not just title that section charter schools. I, I'll work with the staff to get the appropriate lingo there, and then we'll probably add a sentence about charter schools and as well as vouchers. But let me, let me, you're in an area I don't know much about, so I want to make sure I, I talk to your staff to get that. But we can, we can incorporate that. Yep. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Well, one of the pieces that I was asked to review, both by your staff as well as by a number of you, and I know when you were debating about filling this position, as you know, you, you started a recruitment of this effort. You didn't really get a very qualified pool of candidates. Most of them were pretty raw and, and unskilled. Some of them fresh out of law school. Part of that is, is how you market the position, but also part of that is your overall compensation range. And I, I raised when I first spoke with your staff about that I do enough city and county attorney searches, which are not identical but comparable. Many of the skill sets would be very similar. And so your staff had originally prepared some information that came through looking at a number of, I'll say from your approach, is comparable school districts in terms of size and scale and scope, and whether they were internal or external general counsel-type services. I will tell you that I've gone back through that information. We've updated that. Some of that information is still pretty dated, as you see on this, this slide. Some of it goes back to 2019. Some of them are 2023. Some of them are 2024. So it's the best information we could get in working with your staff through the database you've got. But what you, what you have presently, and I've highlighted the Polk County Public School General Counsel position. As you can see, you're about 850,000, a population of about 97,000 students, and you can compare that to some other groups. And your, your, at least initially, your salary range was 129,260 to 172,502, and that obviously is the most current salary. I've tried to look at some of the comparables, both from, in this slide and then another slide, looking at cities and counties as well, based on your size and the comparable number of students that you have to give you a sense of it. As you can see, I've, I've looked at Brevard County, Lee County, and Pinellas County as, as kind of comparables, if you will. And this is more of an art than a science. Anybody that does this will tell you that you've got to massage this a little bit. Those comparables all reflect salaries back in 2023. So I'm assuming they've adjusted at least once, if not twice, since that point. So please take that into mind. And then, and just as a sidebar note, because obviously a space that I work in pretty regularly is in city and county and general, city-county attorney positions, general counsel-type positions. So some of these represent some communities I have personally done recruitments for recently, in some cases just recently. And some of these, I have relationships because I've done other recruitments for those organizations since they were able to get me some comparable information as well. And so I put the Polk County salary there. But now, I realize it's not identical, but you're also looking for in some of your desired skill sets, board certified in state, local government operations. Those would be very comparable skills that they certifications these organizations would be looking at. I will tell you that there was also desire to find folks that might have certification education. When I went to the Florida Bar Search just last week to kind of get a snapshot, there were like 20 people that were certified in the entire state. So it's a relatively small pool. I don't know that we're going to necessarily get that right off the bat. But there certainly are more state, local, county board certified candidates. And so I wanted to give you this type of salary information as well, because I think you're likely to see some candidates come from that, those pools that are going to have that background. There's also certification in, at the Florida Bar and administration and some other sources that we've, we've flagged. So we'll certainly go out and market that. But my sense is, when it was all said and done, as I've marked in the brochure, my sense is your target salary range is probably in that 190 to 220 range. And because you've already been in the marketplace with a lower salary range, I didn't want to just put in the brochure salary dependent upon qualifications and experience, because people that have seen that before are going to say, oh, well, you know, I know what that salary was, and I wasn't interested in that before for whatever reason. So I think we should be identifying a range. That's my best guess, but I recognize that has. That's my best guess, but I recognize that has internal issues and equity. But I know in talking with the HR folks as well, there was a desire that we probably need to have that conversation with you as a board. So I'll stop again there and address, and we can go back and forth the documents as necessary.
Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Just a general question. I know you talk about the art and science of this. Just because I do know about the Lee County one, which was a recent hire, how many of these would have been just the salary that you get from, you know, like our public information? But, or some that have actually gone through an attorney search where then they reevaluate it and adjust it?
Yeah, all right. So Carol, the, the background of this material largely came from your staff. I formatted it a little bit differently to make it for ease of presentation materials. But my understanding is that there was a public records request out to a variety of districts. They all directed you back to this website. And so the website is what the website is, Dr. Allen. It does not give you any of that material. It really says here it was and when it was. It doesn't tell me how long they've been there. Sometimes if they're, if, if there's multiple years of a given person, I know they've maybe been there three, four, or five years. But once again, I, you know, not being the source, I'm accessing a database that's, that the school district had available to it. So I can't answer fully those questions.
Indeed. Thank you. That's all I need.
No further questions?
Are you good with a 190, 220 then? I'm hearing kind of a consensus without any opposition to that as a, as a desired salary range. That's what I, that's what I put in the brochure. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that before we go live.
Mrs. Fields.
Is it typical that the general counsel is the second highest-paid person in a school district?
I don't know that now. I will tell you that my experience typically for cities, counties and other organizations that have boards, typically your superintendent, your manager, your administrator would be typically your highest and your, the next other person that would report to the board is typically your city attorney or county attorney, and they are normally the second highest. Yes, that would be a fair statement, at least in my experience across, not just here in Florida, but across the country and organizations.
Well, just from looking at this scale here, the salary scale, if you look at Pinellas County, that's close to us as far as the population. Their school board attorney is almost at 223. Well, they are.
And that was in 2023.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's a little dated.
Right. And so I think that in order for us to attract the, the right candidates, we're going to have to go a little bit higher than we probably feel comfortable doing.
I'm certainly comfortable putting a higher, if you want to go to 220.
No, 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 I'm not saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm saying higher than 172.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. No, I would agree with you. I mean, you've, you've been to the marketplace, you've seen what you, what you've attracted in that regard. Now, obviously, our outreach will be a much more targeted approach than maybe what you've done in the past. But yeah, I, I would find it very hard that you're going to find someone with the skill sets and experience and background you're looking for at that level. If I just give you my example, I've done, I'm about to do a launch for the, the city attorney in Northport, but I've done four of their assistant city attorneys. If you look at theirs and they have at least five-plus years of experience, they're, some of their positions are, are above where your, your starting salary is here. And, and that's a much, you know, that's a community of 89,000 and there's four attorneys plus the city attorney and that staff. So yeah, I think your, your starting, your, your 172 is not going to be an attractive salary for most qualified candidates.
Agreed.
Ms. Miller.
I just, I agree with you. I also look at the counties and the cost of living in different counties. And even locally, we have to be mindful of what we're selling. We're selling a different year. You're not, you are working 12 months, but through the summer you are not, it doesn't look like, the 10 months look much different than, than what you would do at a firm. Also, the timeframe, a lot of attorney, a lot of attorneys and some that I spoke to about this position said, you're going to sell quality of life, you're going to sell someone who's either leaving or has young kids. There is, there are people that are interested. It is a narrow field, but you're not going to be able to sell the salary range. You're going to have to sell what you're offering to that person. And I think that's both considering the salary and the benefits of working for a school district and what you're doing. And I know it's a high-stress environment, but, you know, working in a firm is much different. And so I appreciate that you've taken on the initiative to talk about salary. I think that was the biggest thing that stood out. But I also want to say, we sent this out once. I can confidently say that it wasn't done thoroughly or to the channels that, that I'd hoped it had been done to. So I'm just hoping, using a concentrated effort that you're going to give us in itself, will bring people in to interview.
I can, I can, I appreciate that in the effort. And having done a lot of, of city and county attorney searches, I can tell you that although we do advertising, we're going to recommend there's some advertising, as you've seen in the presentation, because you've got to capture that. But most of, we're doing a lot more, who else has been in searches? I'm going to, you know, these districts I just mentioned, they're going to get information. I'm going to find out who those folks are and make sure they are aware of it. And so that's their, in today's marketplace, that's how you have to recruit for positions of this type of stature. Absolutely. One other piece, just on this, and it's on this slide as well, for consideration. I don't need direction on it today. We can see that as we go deeper into the process. But I just want you to be aware, it's my understanding this position has not, although you are kind of an FRS state retirement system, I do not, I never got full clarification, but it's my understanding the position was not considered in senior management. I will tell you that many of the lead positions we see for city and county attorneys, that's something that comes forward. So that's a little different multiplier, a little different benefit. And the other piece I wanted to let you know is that oftentimes we would see vehicle allowances and relocation assistance depending upon where the person's coming from. So I just wanted to highlight that. We don't need to finalize that today. As you get to the point where we're getting closer with a candidate you like, those are likely to be items of points of consideration. So I just don't want you to get caught off guard with that later as well. So this is, I mentioned about advertising. Most of these are relatively either free or relatively low cost. These are where we would recommend, we'll be placing ads, we'll work with your staff to make sure you're good with these. But if you're good, we'll hit go when we launch the job. And then above and beyond that, we do all the other things that SGR does with our social media and our marketing, our job alerts and all the other things that are happening. But I just wanted to be aware, this is kind of the, the market that when we're advertising, especially here in Florida, what we're looking for, what we'll, what we'll try to target for as well. And then I just, I know some of you came on board, I think after we were selected. So I don't know if everybody kind of understood what this process is. So I want to spend just a few minutes just to explain where we are and the steps that will take place. And then we can, we can close on what the proposed search timeline looks like. The first part has been completed, the organizational inquiry analysis. I've met with all of you, we've developed the brochure. We're here today to approve that with those adjustments. We'll make those adjustments and we should be able to hit go this week. I'm anticipating for projection purposes before the end of the week. We'll do this for about a 30-day window and we'll be out of your hair during that window. But I will keep in touch with your HR department to give you updates about halfway into that, how the pool is developing, demographics, you know, what we're doing to market the position. So you're aware of that. I'm also available. You've all got my contact information. If you got a question, feel free to give me a shout as we go forward. As we finish and the position closes, I'll be back preparing a review of that. We'll end up, I work with John. I know there's been a recent Attorney General's opinion about presidential searches that aren't exactly like this. But I've looked through that and we've talked through the way to make sure that we don't run any challenges. What will happen is we'll end up doing a presentation with you to present the quality of the candidate pools. We can send you their cover letters and resumes. You've got all that ahead of time. We'll walk through that and out of that group, you'll select a smaller number of folks that you want to learn more about. From that point, those folks will do questionnaires and some video interview, recorded responses. We'll start some media searches. I'm doing some of that at the front end, but we'll start with a LexisNexis-type media review. And then we'll package all that material up, send that back to you, give you all a chance to review that. There are video interviews you can review, any online information, it's your own hour and leisure. But we want you to have that work all done and then I'll come back, work with you. And out of that group, I joke, it's kind of like being on Survivor, who's on the island, who's off the island and go through it. But normally what will happen is there'll be two or three everybody loves, two or three nobody really loves, and a bunch that are in the middle. And we'll just kind of facilitate that conversation. And the goal here is to try to get somewhere between three or five folks that you'd like to bring in for interviews. From there, we'll talk to you. Every time I'm meeting with you, I'll tell you about what's coming next. But we'll talk about, we normally ask our finalists to prepare a document called a first-year game plan. It's a written exercise about if they're appointed, how will they approach the position? What will they do in their first 30, 60, 90, 180 days in kind of the balance of the year? It gets them focused about getting their head and their heart and the soul about the position. You may have some exercises or assessments or PowerPoints that you would like them to do. We'll work with you about what that looks and feels like. And then we'll also complete the second part of it. Now we're down to that bottom of the funnel. We're going to do criminal history, credit, background, academic, all the, all the material, reference checks, all that sort of stuff will be undertaken on those folks that you know everything about those folks that you want to do. And then the onsite interview process will involve a variety of actions. We'll walk through those here shortly, but we'll help you facilitate that. We'll have proposed questions and what the schedule looks like. Many times we're going to involve your senior staff. I suspect you're going to want your superintendent, some of your, your leadership that I met with at the front end to also meet with these candidates to get a chance to, to kick the tires, so to speak. We suggest one-on-one meetings with all of you and then certainly culminating in a public meeting as required under the Florida statutes. And at the end of the day, we would work with you to help facilitate a negotiation of whatever that employment agreement, whatever that document looks and feels like and working through terms and conditions. I always stress the fact that we're engaged by you, so you are our client. We're here to help facilitate whoever you ultimately select. And I'm in a position to help you facilitate that conversation. If a candidate is asking for something that's unrealistic, I can be that buffer. If the board is saying something that I also wouldn't normally see in a, in a traditional position like this, I'll be candid and to say, I think that's not necessarily what you would expect to see for a position of this nature. But our goal here is to bring the parties together, but I always work for you. I'm not working for the candidate, but the goal is to facilitate a, a process to get you together. And then it's a matter of finalizing that. It comes back to you as a board, just like any other formal action would be. And you'd be, you'd be authorizing that. And then it's a matter of who you hire, when their start date would be, and how quickly they're coming on board. So with that as a background, the next steps would take place. We'll, we'll finalize the brochure, we'll launch. I would anticipate launching this week. Then these are the things that will take place in, in upcoming meetings. The, the next time I'll physically be before you will be after the position is closed and you'll have some background material to review the candidates. And I'll kind of unpack that through a series of presentations of, of, you know, here's the candidates, here's the background, here's what we know about them, here's all the things that you want to do. And from there, facilitate a selection of semifinalists. From there, as I say, we'll start some additional work. We'll be back again to review your finalists' work. They will be selected typically three to five folks. Whereas I say, we do first-year game plans, we do the background efforts. There's some personality assessments, DISC assessments. If they want to do those, we can, we can facilitate that. And then the onsite interview process is typically a two-day process. We will talk about this greater, but right now I'm proposing a two-day, which is normally can accomplish what we're trying to, to, to learn about these candidates. Normally on the day one, you would have staff members taking your candidates out and kind of showing them facilities and a tour to get kind of the landscape of what, what Polk County and your district's all about. We typically encourage, since the general counsel will be interfacing with a lot of your senior staff, we typically encourage an opportunity for them to sit down in what I call an engagement session. It's going to feel like an interview, but it's also going to feel a little bit like a staff meeting. And we'll help facilitate those conversations. I'll sit with those, those meetings as well. I'll be watching how they relate to the candidate, how the candidate's relating to the staff. We'll capture their thoughts and opinions and insights, we're not asking them to rank them. That's ultimately your responsibility, but any feedback or impressions. Normally on day one, for any of my public bodies in Florida, because of the Sunshine Act, most of the time we have kind of a round robin dating process where you all get 30 or 40 minutes or 45 minutes with each candidate and you get a chance to kind of do that in a one-on-one and we facilitate that in that first day. And then on the second day is where probably in this room, each of the candidates would normally be involved in a formal public interview process with you collectively as a board. And we'll help prepare you for that process with questions and issues and just facilitate that all the way through your selection process. So those are kind of what that looks like. We'll, we'll flush those out every time I'm with you to get a little more detail, but I wanted to give you a sense of, of the process that we normally use that gets us to a successful conclusion. And then based upon trying to, working with your staff and working with Dr. Allen and what meeting dates you've got, I've tried to land as many of the dates as I could for my selection of triage, for selection of semifinalists, and then also the selection of finalists on dates that you already are meeting in the challenge of trying to get seven of you on new, new meeting dates. So doing that kind of pushes this a little bit longer. I wouldn't normally need as much time between the selection of semifinalists and the selection of finalists. But in talking with Dr. Allen, the week before that would work, I think you've got a, you've got legislative days up in Tallahassee and also several of you, I think, are going to be involved in a school board retreat, or a school board conference of some sort. So I just left it on the March 25th to, so we didn't have to worry about changing that date. But we, we could have made that a little earlier, but I don't know that that's going to work on your schedule. And then you'll see kind of, it becomes self-executing once we're through this process. So that gets us to interviews and I've given a couple of options of a two-day process. I would not need all of you for both full days, but I would need you at least for the one-on-one section on the first day. And we'll facilitate once we know how many candidates we've got and what that would look like. But so that could get you to mid-April 15th and the 16th, or potentially the 22nd or 23rd. So I wanted to get those dates out there and if those work, or if I've got to work with Yvette and you collectively, we'll figure out what other dates come into play. But that's kind of the way the process would work.
Mr. Thomas, you need direction though on the salary piece. Or, I mean, the direction is we're going to, because what you've posted, what you've listed here, that's our salary, that's our current salary range for this position. And just to give the board a little bit of extra information, we have the, the superintendent, which obviously is the highest-paid employee and that's under contract. But the next few positions that you'll see in our administrative salary guide is deputy superintendent with, and also chief of staff is on that next salary grade. And then our attorney is on the very next, and that's the salary grade that you list there. That doesn't mean that's the order of how employees are paid because it depends on their experience and other factors when we, we hire. But that's why we post that range there is based on that administrative guide that, that we have and how we place. And that's how currently the attorney position is placed.
So to your question then, what I'm recommending is that salary range ought to be somewhere in the 190 to 220 range, which is what I proposed in the brochure. If that takes official action of the board, I'll defer to you to whatever that would be. But we, yes, we would need that because we'd be ready to hit go on this with these minor adjustments that we've talked about with this, Ms. Miller's comments. That's kind of what I was, I was reading it that way, John. Yeah.
Mrs. Wyatt.
Yes, I, looking at the, the calendar portion of it, I really appreciate you using dates that were already available because I know how difficult it is to get seven people's calendars to align. The, just wanted to put it on the board's radar, that 15th and 16th may be more appropriate. The 22nd, we have a board meeting, but we also have inside PCPS before that. So I just wanted to make sure their whole, whole calendar is based on being able to meet with the school board that date. So if, if we're not, we just need to let them know sooner rather than later. My other question on the calendar that you provided us, it looks like the resume materials and PowerPoint will not be given to the recruiter until the day before our school board meeting in February.
All inside baseball, don't worry about that. I'll, I'll make sure I have it. Yeah, you'll need it for your board, you'll need it for your presentation though as well.
Correct. But we'll need more than 12 hours to look at that.
Right.
So could we get it by Friday, the Friday before, which then at least gives us the weekend to review any of that?
Sure. Let me, let me kind of, thank you for raising that. I hadn't thought about that and I was thinking about from my standpoint, not, not on getting it to you ahead of time. So what we end up doing, that, that presentation will be, here's how we market a position, here's what your demographics look like and the pool. And then I'll walk you through those candidates that have meet or exceed the minimum requirements for the position. And I'll kind of unpack their experience and background and positions they've had, any education or certification they've got. So that will be the way to help kind of you collectively talk about these candidates and then we can start to identify typically it's, you know, one, I'm interested, two, I might be interested, three, I'm not interested. And we'll, we'll do the math and low scores typically will get you to your, get you to your semifinalist. But what I'm going to do in advance is, once the position closes, I'm going to send to you through your, your secretary, your administrative support staff, the alphabetized list of everyone who's applied, cover letters and resumes. So you're going to have all that well in advance of the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint will just be kind of summarizing it. So I've got to work with your staff about how quickly I can get that PowerPoint pulled together after the position closes. But I appreciate you raising that question. I didn't think about the advanced time you might need it to be ready for this. the advanced time, you might need it to be ready for this meeting, we'll, we'll make that work.
Thank you.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pitts, and in that, we would need to vote on those semifinalist candidates for that night in that meeting?
Yes, so what'll take place, I said, normally the way I've done that, Dr. Allen, is I'll just have a spreadsheet with all the qualified candidate names that I'll use as a laptop, and, and as I say, when you start reviewing the material, I'm gonna ask you to review their, their cover letters and resumes ahead of time, we used to be able to do this differently, but given the, given the change in the AG's opinion on a, on a presidential search, we're gonna have to do this a little bit more old-school, so you're gonna have the benefit of that review, I'm gonna highlight their skill sets, and then at the, after I unpack those candidates for you as a group, I'm gonna say, okay, are there any questions about any candidates that we've gone through and address whatever they be, because I often will be talking to some of these folks before that meeting, and I can add some insights that might not be available in their resumes or whatever. And then from there, I'm gonna say, okay, let's just work our way down through the list, and I'll say candidate one, candidate two, candidate three, and I'll ask you to say, it's a one, it's a two, or a three, one is definitely, two maybe, a three no, and we, that'll, that'll, that'll quickly give us an idea of where you are as a group, so yes, you will take official action in selecting your semifinalist, and then, again, when we select your finalist, it'll be a similar type process at that stage.
Perfect, so, I appreciate everybody looking at this timeline, I, I would love to hear some feedback, I think as Ms. Wyatt mentioned, we have the inside PCPS that morning of the 22nd, so, when, if you notice the interview start date, he's mentioning those two different options, so, he did mention, I was wondering, with those one-on-one interviews, if you didn't want to carve out two extra days, right, in your, everybody's schedule, the 15th and the 16th, and you would then only be carving out the 23rd from your schedule, because we already have, you know, obviously a full day inside PCPS, work session, and board meeting on the 22nd, you're looking at about three hours, three and a half hours is what I was sort of collectively hearing from you as far as how much time we need to allot it for those one-on-one interviews?
Yes, between 30, depending on how many candidates we have, if we got three, we can spend a little, if we got five, we'll probably spend a little less time with them. And, yeah, so, we have to juggle that, plus have bathroom breaks and all that sort of stuff, but yeah, so assume, assume half a day, just to be on the safe side.
Yeah, so maybe some feedback, board members, because you could do like a 7:00 AM start, I think the inside PCPS starts at 11, so, you know, so, I guess, you know, what my question is to you, are you willing to carve out those two extra days on the 15th and the 16th, beyond our already busy day on the 22nd?
With the first day meaning maybe half a day.
Is it the 22nd, or is, March is the 25th?
Yeah, I'm speaking of the, the interview start date, if you notice on the very bottom there, he's got the two options noted, so it's either we need to carve out the 15th and the 16th, or, you know, on the 22nd, we already have a work session and a board meeting that night, but you do have the inside PCPS that starts at 11 that day on the 22nd, so technically you would just be carving out the 23rd as an extra day beyond your normal day that you're already, you know, you're obligated to on the 22nd.
And we work with you to determine if the morning's available, we'll, we'll figure out for the one-on-one sessions what fits in your schedule, I would also, not to overcomplicate things, but I, I believe I picked that because I knew you had a meeting on the 22nd, if those present a challenge, the Thursday, the 24th, and the Friday, the 25th are also available on my schedule, but I, I don't want to create conflict if those, if we don't need to go there, but I want to throw those about, out there if need be.
I'm good, if you want to hear from other board members, thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Mr. Sharpless.
I'm good with, with either option, I would prefer option one, which is the 15th and 16th, because we don't have that work, work session and board meeting, I think it would just give us more flexibility throughout the day.
Sure. Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, question just on after the, it stops with the interviews, and at some point, I, I'm hoping we're gonna hire someone, if we do the interviews on the 15th and 16th, would the thought be that it's on our agenda for the 22nd to appoint that individual?
Typically, I've not looked at your, whatever agreement, when Wes was here, you know, that agreement is probably way dated at this stage, but we would work with your staff to kind of make sure the kind of the basic terms and conditions of a traditional contemporary agreement would be in effect, then it's a matter of just kind of filling in the blanks and adjusting based on the negotiations with who you select, so normally, a week to 10 days after a candidate is officially selected as the lead candidate, it is normally my experience, before you get that button down, and then you can have it ready for your action, so your next board meeting is when again, after that?
The 22nd, well, if we do it on the 15th and 16th, it's the 22nd, if we do it on the 22nd and 23rd, it's not till?
The question's gonna be is, I don't know what your lead time is for needing that for your agenda packet, that would be the only question I would have, because you've got to have, you've got to have.
Seven days.
You need seven.
But we could, we could upload the item though, we could add it as an item and not upload the attachment until, I mean, I would think that there's reason that it's necessary to do it before the next meeting.
You got a placeholder to do it, and then you could plug it in, but I, that's the only point, is sometimes, you know, you're working through the logistics, and we just don't know, we don't know who that person is yet, if all those things work out, but I think that that, a seven to ten, 10-day window is a typical negotiation window in my experience.
And that's correct, our items are due seven days before, but we can put a placeholder and then attach the item.
And then my last question is probably more for John, does that, to be able to approve a contract on the 22nd, would that mean the 16th at the end of our interviews that we would need to have an actual board meeting to vote on?
And, that was a good question, any of these items that Mr. Thomas has talked about that would connote or require board action, official action, would likely need to be noticed as such.
A board meeting, is it?
As board meetings, as opposed to work sessions, like, like what you did today, you took action at the nine o'clock meeting, so a component of that work session could then go into a meeting if you needed to take action and.
Well, and I think all of these are, have board meetings attached to them already, for the, because they're all end of the month, but the, the 16th is something that we're adding on, so that's, if, if those are the dates we select, so that's why I was just asking if that would need to have a board meeting.
Yes.
Attached to make action.
And noticed appropriately.
Thank you.
Typically, what you do is you open the meeting, and then your agenda is the various speaker, or your, and then you close, you're done with the last interview, and then you reconvene the meeting for discussion deliberations, but to, to your question, yes, each time, I'm gonna be with you in the future, there'll be official board action required, which would require appropriate notice.
So, but we need to do that during the work session, we can't put it on the agenda for the night of, so if it's on our work session that morning?
I mean, I suppose you could have consensus and talk about it, and then vote on it that evening, I don't know how long Mr. Thomas is gonna, if he needs to be present.
Normally I would be here to help you facilitate that conversation, and when I walk out the door, I know who your semifinalists are, because I'm gonna then be notifying them and getting them prepared for the next step, but if that's a two-step process, where I'll just have to work that out with John to figure a scale of.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I just, I'm always hesitant to schedule a board meeting in the middle of a work session, because those time certains.
Right, understood.
Mr. Keys.
I was just going to be on the same page as Mr. Sharpless on the 15th and 16th of April, because the following of those other dates suggested after the 22nd and the 23rd in the month, I would not be available, so, I'm in consensus with the 15th and 16th.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Fields.
15th and 16th?
15th and 16th.
That is extremely helpful, thank you for, for locking down, I know it's, I know it's important to you, but it's also helpful for my candidates, because as they apply, I can tell them, here's when action steps are gonna be there, if they got a cruise or a wedding, or, you know, something like that, it's easier to make, give them as much advance notice of when we think these dates for onsite interviews, should they be selected, will occur, so thank you. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions, I'm gonna then, I'm just for clarity, I'm gonna take into account the comments that we addressed, I'll work with your staff here in the next day or so to incorporate the issues about vouchers and all that, but if you're good with that, I'm not gonna come back to you with a second, I'll just hit go, and with the brochure as with those adjustments, if you're comfortable with that.
Okay.
Consensus?
Thomas, thank you for being here today.
My pleasure, thank you so much, look forward to working with you, and as always, you've got my contact information, if there's any questions along the way, we're here to help you through this process, give me a shout, shoot me an email or text, whatever works for you. Great, thanks again, look forward to, thank you.
Board members, that is the last item on our agenda today, we do have a closed session that will follow up as soon as we close this work session, thank you for the opportunity to sit with you today and for being so kind, we will move on and call this business meeting closed.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts, I would like to maybe just see if anybody had any other board member comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I didn't.
That's all right, thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Unclose it, right?
So good that you're here, yeah, I just, basically any board member comments before we do adjourn? All right, very good. All right, Ms. Miller, you're recognized.
I apologize for my absence, was it discuss, I know we discussed the date for, the dates we're doing the attorney search, have you, have we discussed setting a meeting date before September for a retreat, a meeting, the board people all at the same table?
Yeah, and, and again, this was something Superintendent and I were working on to try to bring some of those dates back to you, but you could see, obviously, we're already carving out a lot of time as well, so we will bring some dates back.
Can we get them before the next meeting? He thought I had them, and I don't have them, so obviously he's provided them, can you forward them before the next meeting?
Ms. Yvette does have a list of those dates.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wyatt.
That was my same question, sorry.
All right, I see no other questions.
Yep.
Sounds good.
I say we adjourn the meeting.
All right, at this point, this meeting is now adjourned.